The purpose of this meeting is to conduct business in the Gainsborough area school district. Public comment is welcome. Issues will refer to the appropriate board, committee, or administrator. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be available by contacting the business office. You can take a moment and silence our cellphones and any other electronic devices. That would be appreciated. Before we get started, just as a matter of note, the board will hold executive session on a personnel matter immediately following tonight's meeting. An additional will be an administrative conference for board development. And it appears that everyone is here. Amy Beth is not, and she is excused. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance is as follows, in the United States of America. In the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
I stand corrected. Notices and communications? Okay, here we go. Citizens' participation? Good evening, everyone. We have three people from the community that have requested to address the board. First, we'll have Mike Shostak. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to see what you're doing for all the students. There's quite a few, and as you know, I live at 264 Baltimore Street, so I look right down over to Le Feuver. Last time I was here was the 6th of January, and I asked you to adopt two letters. The T for teamwork and C for communication. And that's what brings me back. On the 6th of January, I talked about the ADA parking meters at Le Feuver and where that action stood. And I also talked about the safety concerns I have with my two favorite alleys, Schoolhouse Alley and Wall Alley. As you know, the Presbyterian Church put a parking lot there, which, you know, I support it. But when you look at a horse blanket, you know, in an engineering drawing, you don't realize what it's going to look like. There's five spaces that back up onto Schoolhouse Alley. Dangerous. And then there's two entrances or exits on Wall Alley. And the eastern one is right at the top of the hill. I talked to the police chief, and I took Carly Matthews out there, and I had a very nice meeting with Charles Cable, who is also concerned on why you haven't gotten back to him on the ADA spaces. You know, I was told the 6th of January might, somebody will contact you. I'm not that hard to get ahold of. It's 56 niggas. Who's going to get back to me? That's exactly what I'm living with, is silence. Okay? The third item I have is also safety. Normally mornings, somewhere around 8 o'clock, I go down to Schoolhouse Alley, take it right on Le Feuver, and there's somebody from the school out there, and his knee on, and he's got traffic cones out there directing traffic, so there's smooth flow of the school buses. This afternoon, in the afternoon, there's a different fellow there without the traffic cones. What's the rule? What's the safety? Jim Whitebird, who used to do some of that, sees that as a safety concern. You know, if he doesn't have the traffic cones on, what authority does he have to be at there? And summer's going to start. Weezer Winer is going to open again, and so is Mr. G. If you're not going to do anything about the parking, maybe I'll do some valet parking down here. Who do I see about a permit? Three bucks parking all day. What do you think? Want to join the crew? I'm serious. This has been ongoing for two or three years. Communication is key. It's more than about education. It's about safety. Please get back to me. I'm not about writing write-to-know letters, because if I do that, it's a distraction, and it costs you money. I'd rather you spend your time on the three Rs, reading and writing arithmetic. Thanks for listening.
Sir, just as a side note, when we read that first statement, it will be referred to the appropriate person. Thanks, Mike. Next, we have Shelley Mahoney. Good evening, Shelley.
Good evening, everyone. I am here once again on behalf of my twin third graders and their fellow classmates at Franklin Township Elementary School. I am very concerned and frustrated with these large class sizes these children have had to endure for the past three years. We need your help. I am begging you for your help. As a mother and a teacher, it is breaking my heart that I don't have any answers for my children or their friends. I keep hearing, mommy, did you email? Mommy, did they email you after the last school board meeting with any answers? No. I'm looking at two children, and they're not understanding why I'm not getting any answers back after I was promised answers. I'm hearing, mommy, why is it that our class gets stuck with just two teachers, especially when all the other grades have three teachers? Mommy, why did we lose Ms. Becky? She was the paraprofessional that they had in second grade. Why did we lose her, especially when we still have so many kids in our classes? We only had her for one year. Why couldn't she go with us if we only had two teachers? Mommy, why is it so hard to hear and concentrate with all the noise from our class and the other class? That fake wall doesn't block out the other class's noise. It's really hard to concentrate, especially during tests. Mommy, I'm worried that we are going to have only two fourth grade teachers again next year. I can go on and on, but as a mom, it's hard looking at my children's faces and listening to them every day. They just told me today, Mom, I don't think I did as best as I could on my foundation's test today because of the noise and the distraction. My children are A students, and they're having a hard time. I'm a parent that is involved. I'm doing my part at home. I need some help at school. They're getting frustrated. We gave you all the facts and the numbers for our school and the others within the district. The similarities and differences are scary. We know it takes a village to raise a child. Well, all of you have chose to be a part of this village. Now more than ever, we need your help. Our children need your help, because what they are presently happening to them is not fair. If you don't want to answer our whys, why is this happening? Why is this happening in first grade, second grade, third grade? That's fine. I don't really care about the whys. I just want it fixed, for my children's sake. I have twin third graders that have been dealing with this for three years. I'm scared for their PSSA results. I'm scared for their future academics. Please help them. Please help me help them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Shelley. And last, we have Logan Sieg. Good evening, Logan.
Hi, good evening. I am the parent of a third grade student at Franklin Township as well, and I'm here again, along with some other parents here, to share some of our family's concerns about class size as well. Obviously, I would find some of the enrollment stats over the past three years, and here's where I would like to respectfully request additional reasoning on this class size. And we'll start with last year. August 22nd, 2018 enrollments for the second graders at the time had 56 students. My son was placed in one of two classrooms provided for the second grade. First grade had an enrollment of 52 students, four less than second grade, and they were provided with three teachers for that level. This school year, August 21st, 2019 enrollments for now, a third grader, has 55 students enrolled and again, only two teachers. The class behind my child also has 55 students, but three teachers again. I'm going to repeat that. August 21st, 2019 enrollments for my now third grader has 55 students enrolled, and again, only two teachers. James Geddes has 56 students enrolled in third grade and three teachers. Second grader James Geddes has 54 students enrolled and three teachers. Lincoln had 54 students enrolled in second grade and three teachers. 67 students enrolled in third grade and three teachers, thankfully so. As a parent of a student at Franklin Township in the third grade classroom, I think the information we're sharing here is enough to wonder why. There had been no answers provided other than the fact that each year, you know, this is something that is evaluated, teachers are placed where they are needed, and we understand, but this does not seem to be the case. Why would three teachers be provided for a grade level that has less enrollment? Last year, my child should have had three teachers, and they were evaluated and placed to best suit class sizes. This year, the class behind my child is the same number enrolled, but one more teacher. Again, why? So I'm here to respectfully request more information, and hope this does not affect my child in the future. I hope it does not affect any child in our elementary schools in the district in the future. When you look at enrollment numbers and the number of teachers, Franklin has been one teacher short for the past two years. Enrollment numbers last year and this year don't seem to justify the lack of support here. What we're not making, what is not making sense is we had two teachers in first grade one year, and then three in first grade. The next year, it's two teachers for second grade, and then two teachers for third. It's following the class of 2029. That makes no sense, and that's why you're going to have parents to contact you.
We have it again. Thank you, Logan. That concludes public remarks. Action. Number five, routine approvals. The board will discuss and take action on requests approved, routine approvals. Those would be 5.1 through and including 5.6. I have a motion to approve routine approvals.
So moved. I second that.
Question? Tim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Items for board action number six. 6.1, policy 201, admission of kindergarteners and first graders, beginner first graders. I am going to take you to the action items separately for both. I have a motion to accept and pass 6.1, policy 201.
I'll move forward to approve 6.1.
Second. Question? Sylvan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Timman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 6.2, policy 204, attendance.
Second.
Questions? Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Timman?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 6.3, policy 208, withdrawal from school.
So moved.
Second.
Question? Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Timman?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 6.4, policy 705, safety. I have a motion to adopt and accept.
So moved.
Second.
Question? Amy Beth?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
Timman?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Item 6.5, policy number 709, building security. I have a motion to adopt that.
So moved. Second.
Question? Al?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
Timman? Kathleen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And our last one, 6.6, policy 712, school security.
So moved.
I'd actually like to make a motion to put this policy back to committee for further discussion. There's some language that I would like to address, and that's specifically regarding our school resource officer.
I'm not sure if everybody caught that, but Timman seconded that motion. It's on the floor with Mike right now.
What? I'm not really great with Robert's rules, but there was a motion made before that motion was made, so do we have to second or not second the first motion before we can second the second motion? And then is that second motion more of a discussion item? Should first be?
I don't believe the first one was seconded at all, right?
The first one was not seconded. After it was, after Carrie put the motion to accept it, Mike then put a motion on the floor and received a second from Tim. That would be a superseding motion, I believe.
I, you've got me there. I mean, there was no opportunity to second it because there, just because there was no opportunity given to second it. It's not, it didn't die for a lack of a second. I don't know. I would say that if a motion is put on the floor, it should have the opportunity to be seconded, and if it's seconded, then that motion is there. In effect, I think that if there is a second, then there should be discussion which would include whether or not it's appropriate to send it back to the committee and why. I mean, you know, so that the whole board can understand the language issues that are being raised.
So following that sequence, if I ask for the second, then the authority, put the motion on the floor under questions?
You didn't, in effect?
Mike then could, Mike then could explain his rationale or his reasoning on why he believes it goes back to committee, and at that point, a vote would be on the motion to whether adopt it as is. If it failed, then Mike could make the motion to send it back to committee, where it would go to a second vote.
Correct. Or someone could make a motion to table it, which would be similar to sending it back to committee.
I would throw my second. Do I have a second on the current motion that Carrie put out?
Second.
Question?
Yes, I would like to discuss putting this policy back to committee to further discuss the language of the policy.
Second. That's under a question, so there would be?
Could you explain more why?
Sure. So the language in there specifically talks about firearms, the use of firearms on district property. And the way it reads is it reads any student, employee, or event staff. And as a resource officer, in effect, as an employee of the school, by contract, that policy is a little bit big in its wording, so I wouldn't like to send it back to committee to further discussion and to iron out the language of that, so our resource officer or any future resource officers are not prohibited from carrying firearms on school property.
I, as former policy committee chair, I would be in support of taking that and addressing it at our next policy committee meeting. I think it's a good suggestion.
And that's fine, but I would point out that technically, our school resource officer is not an employee of the school district. The Gettysburg area school district resource officer is an employee of Cumberland Township Police, and we then contract with Cumberland Township to provide his services here, but it's very clear that for all intents and for all purposes, legal and otherwise, he's an employee of Cumberland Township that spends all of his time here. That's understood, and I think that goes without saying, but the language, especially if you're not an attorney, is vague. I mean, define.
I don't have the language in front of me, so yeah, I'm not arguing that.
Define employee. A lot of people would see Officer Kiefer's employment services, you know, he might be getting his paycheck from Cumberland Township, but ultimately taxpayers are paying his salary. And I just wanted to vote back to committee to discuss it, since it's the second reading, and just have some little further discussion on either the title of the policy or the language within the policy. That was all, just.
And I think, just in conversation, that is probably a very relatively easy fix in policy to exempt any school resource officer, not only the one that we have now or any potential ones in the future, with one sentence in the policy or something close to that. So for the matter of bringing it back through, I'm not sure if we're causing any damage.
Doesn't Act 67 supersede? This is the law on what a school resource officer, so that's what we refer to that. I did a quick search on school resource officers, and they're mentioned in the policy, but there is no policy on the school resource officer, because we revert back to the law on that.
The easiest ways to fix, easiest ways to make the fix are either to add language exempting federal, state, and local law enforcement, or changing the title of the policy to be specific about event security.
So you know, the title from school security to event security. Is that what you're just referring to?
Yeah.
And if we're open for discussion, probably the quickest and easiest fix is what Dr. Parent just said, is adding that sentence in there, exempting, the exemption of state, federal, and local law enforcement, law enforcement officers. I mean, it sounds pretty common sense to me.
Yes, good question. It occurred to me as well that I think the confusion is with the title of the policy. If we decided here tonight we wanted to change the title, is that considered a non-substantive change, or is that substantive enough that it does need to go back to committee?
I would suggest if you do any changes, that either have to be by amendment that would be voted, amendment that would be voted on, or instead, just let the committee come up. One of the things, I don't have the policy in part, so I don't know. One of the things that you find with any document is if you make a quick change and don't consider the entire document when you do that, you might go back and say, whoops, if I hadn't really thought about it, then I would have made this other change to coincide with it. So if there's no time issue, yeah. The key to the point is if there's not a pressing issue, I mean, no harm in sending it back to committee to discuss.
And anybody else? I'm sorry.
I just have a question. Do we have any other policies that specifically state that firearms shall not be stored, carried, or used on school grounds? Is this the only policy?
Because it'd be the weapons policy.
Yeah, and the law is pretty clear on that as well.
Are there any further questions? From the position I'm in, then I believe the proper way of doing this is to vote on the particular amendment as to whether to carry it through. Depending on the outcome of that vote, if it would fail here this evening, Mike certainly is out of the liberty of making a motion to send it back to committee, and we can move forward that way. Yes. Thank you. All right, further questions on 66, policy 712, school security? So by saying no? By saying no, you are effectively tableing this. That is correct. No further questions? Roll call. Timman?
No.
Al?
No.
Carrie?
No.
Amy Beth?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Mike?
No.
Tim?
No.
Sylvan?
No.
And I also vote no.
I'd like to move to table this policy, or send this policy back to the policy committee for a further review.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any questions on the motion to send back school security number seven, or 712, to the committee, the revision? If not, Sylvan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Tim? Timman, I'm sorry, not Timman. And I vote yes. Number seven, the informational items that you have before you. 7.1 is an overnight trip, and you can see that relates to Technical Student Association, where students at Seven Springs is a mountain resort. Are there any questions on the informational item 7.1? 7.2 is also an overnight trip. As you can see there, that's middle school. It's also the exact same thing for the technical program at Seven Springs. Are there any questions on 7.2? And I believe, Dr. Parent, these are students that qualified in a regional or a local competition, and then this is a state competition? Right. In conference. The regional, those folks that placed here and then are competing at a state. Number eight, board committee reports. Before we ask for board committee reports, one item that was left, holdover from last meeting, was the alternate for the Adams County Technical Institute, and that would be only in a period of time where Carrie would be unavailable as a representative of the Gettysburg School Board. It's my understanding that we, after discussion, have an individual board member that wishes to take the alternate spot. Is that correct? Sylvan?
Yes.
That is you then. Can I have, without a voting consensus with the board, that Sylvan Hershey will be the alternate to the Adams County Technical Institute and replace if Carrie's solving when she can, in her absence? Without any objections, Sylvan, congratulations.
Again, thank you.
Under voting committee reports, Andrew was wanting to, or spoke with me about updating us on his committee, as he did at the last board meeting. Andrew.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give a quick update again on our brand ambassadors committee. We met last Tuesday, February 25th, and at that meeting, we looked at the preliminary style guide. I put it up on the screen, and that is a document that details the entire district brand, which is underway, but it's pretty far from completion at this point. We also sampled a refreshed or evolving district arrowhead logo and district crest, and the over 20-member committee consisting of all stakeholders determined that the arrowhead will be the official logo of the district moving forward. So right now, we're in the stages of evolving or refreshing that logo, along with the district crest, the one that is behind you and also appears on diplomas and things like that. So the next step after the logos are finalized is to complete the style guide and to begin the rollout of the refreshed brand. So that is what we talked about at this past meeting. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Andrew while he's here?
Andrew, thank you so much. So just so I make sure I understood, the refreshed arrowhead will be the official logo, so will that replace the crest on official documents?
So it really depends. On official documents, it's probably still going to be the crest, but on, you know, like letterhead that we send out for everyday items or things like that, business cards, our website, different areas like that, the sports field, the turf field like it is already, or the gym floors, it will be the arrowhead. And then the crest will be used for, my understanding, very official documents like diplomas and things like that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just note quickly that the arrowhead really kind of caught on very quickly. I'm not sure. We're still doing a little bit of research. At the next meeting, we're going to talk a little bit more about the history of both that logo and the district crest as well, and just dive into that a little bit deeper so the entire committee understands, you know, where those originated. But honestly, the arrowhead has caught on, you know, it's even on our soap dispensers in the bathroom, so I think a lot of people are really gravitating towards that logo. So I think the committee made a wonderful choice, and we're excited to move forward with that.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any other committee reports this evening?
Yeah, I would like to go over a little bit of the meeting that I was in attendance last week when Carrie was unable to be there. I found it very interesting. I found the food really good, rubbing it into it. I found the food really good, rubbing it into it. I'm not quite sure exactly what happened there, but somehow I left there being elected treasurer of it. And I'm not sure that I can be that as an alternate. So I think in the little chat I had with Carrie here, Carrie will continue with that because I think it's in, in Gettysburg area school districts favor to have that treasurer here for the purposes of Sean coming over and getting signature wise that need to be. But I went home and told my wife that, she said, you opened your mouth once again. I guess, well, that really wasn't true. I just sort of was given the position, I think, because of representing Gettysburg. But I did hand out, and if you haven't taken a look at an opinion article that was in last Thursday's paper, which followed the Wednesday meeting that I was at, it just, the timing of it was so perfect. And it does talk about Adams County Technical Institute, ACTI, since we're a society that loves initials rather than actually telling you what it is. It, it goes over a lot of the things that we talked about at that meeting. So it is a passion of mine and I'm happy to be the official substitute for Carrie. But you need to know that there were other school districts' board members there that were involved in the discussions that were going on, even asking questions on the budget. And I'm not so sure that that was appropriate, but it is a little bit more loosely run than, you know, a, a board meeting like hours every first and third meeting. But I would encourage you to, to come over to the Botech, the Technical Institute. And it is always the third Wednesday, I believe. Okay. And it's five thirty start, or at least this one's a five thirty. Okay. So please feel free to come over and listen to what's going on. Just a couple notes that I took down. There are still some openings in the culinary program. There are some openings in the building and trades program. And they're looking to get an early learning program up and running. Sean is, was being, was holding a position that was paid, twenty-five percent of his salary, I believe, was paid by us. And seventy-five percent was put into the budget. He now is going to be paid one hundred percent since the program has expanded so that his salary will come out of the budget. We need to vote in that budget next month, I believe, Doc?
The tech rep, yeah, I think it was two. Yeah, coming up.
Okay. I gave Carrie a copy of that budget and I think one was by your desk, but I'm not sure. You probably already had it because I think your superintendent's meeting preceded ours, but I'm not sure of the timing. Anyway, listening to what I listened to that evening, I would certainly say that we're getting our money's worth. Each of the districts is getting their money's worth in, in the programs that are offered. And one of the things that was always my dream was that, as whether it be a high school principal or superintendent, was when I was in attendance at graduation, every student who crossed that stage, whether it be in a football field or whether it be in an auditorium, I wanted to know, had plans when their feet hit the floor in the auditorium and it was official that they got their diploma, that they knew what they were doing the next day. Now, obviously, that's a dream, but that was my goal. And I think these programs can do that for our kids. So the, the program's goal is, and it's a lofty one, that they can reach the forty percent of students in most high schools that do not have plans to go to a four-year academic school. So I wish that we, as the Gettysburg area school district, help out in doing that. And I believe our administration at the high school level and district level and this board would also support that. I think that's it.
Dr. Perrin?
I have, Mr. President, I do have a question just very briefly. The finance facilities committee is going to meet just one week later than we originally stated, so it will be March twenty-sixth. By moving that meeting just one week later, it allows those from the district to participate in the PASNO conference to attend that and not have a conflict there.
Thank you, Carrie.
Sorry, butt in here. Is the month of April the one that is strange in that we don't have a board meeting the first week? The first Monday in April?
No.
No?
No, there's eight, there's two. It's April sixth, I believe, the next board meeting. It is April sixth, April twenty, okay. But there is a lapse of an extra week in there based upon when our next board meeting is to our April sixth board meeting.
Okay.
Because there are five Mondays in March.
Yeah, and the reason I asked that question is for the impact it will have on the finance and facilities meeting. I don't think it quite works out the way it normally does.
Right, normally we would need actually the same as the board meeting, only we get just one week later. It will allow those who are contributing to the meeting, Linda, to actually be at the meeting and not miss what's happening at an important conference for, for her work. And a few others in the district to attend that as well. So we will be able to have that finance facilities meeting at March twenty-sixth and then the next board meeting until April sixth. So it still follows the sequence of events that normally happen with that extra Monday in March that it allows it to stay in sequence.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any additional committee reports? I would just say real quickly, piggyback, so to speak, what Sylvan had said, just as a reminder, our committee meetings are advertised publicly, which allows any of the board members to attend any particular committee meeting, whether or not you're actually assigned to a particular committee. And, and quite honestly, in committee meetings, it's, some of the board members that have served with me for the last two years, there's a lot of work and information that occurs during those committee meetings that often doesn't get completely vetted out once we get to the board room on a Monday night. So if you have a particular interest, I encourage not only the public, but any board member to attend as many of the committee meetings they can because it's such a useful workshop, public workshop, that ultimately results in our action items here.
Excuse me, I have a question. Michael, congratulations, you're the chair and you're the head of the policy committee. When is the next meeting?
What is the next one going to be like? I haven't had my first meeting next, next year.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the second Tuesday at four o'clock. And that's March ten. And I would just say a big thank you. Thank you for your support of the policies this evening and previously, and I do appreciate Mike stepping up and being our policy committee chair in the future. Thank you, Mike.
With that, Dr. Perrin on building and program reports, or Dr. Perrin?
Good evening. So I'm excited to announce that we've had a committee working all year with the leadership of Ann Bell, looking to, options for replacing our learning management system at the secondary level. We currently have its learning. And there's been volunteer teachers serving on the committee, serving as pilot teachers to utilize the new systems that we were considering. And the group met last week and decided we're going to move forward with Canvas as our new learning management system. So now the committee and some committees are working toward plans for implementation and upcoming trainings and teachers who are willing to be serving as trained trainers. So it's been a long process, but a thoughtful one. And again, Ann's been doing a great job leading that and we're excited to move forward now that we have a decision. And next week is kindergarten registration. So on both Wednesday, the eleventh, from twelve to eight, and on the twelfth, we will be in this room. A total of sixteen hours, hopefully getting a good sense of how many kindergarteners we will have coming in for the twenty twenty-one school year. Somewhere I saw posted what year they'll graduate, it just seemed really futuristic. And this is Read Across America Week, Dr. Seuss Week, so a lot of the elementary schools in particular are doing events. And I look forward to serving as a guest reader at Franklin Township on Friday. Thank you.
Congratulations to the girls' basketball team, the Giants Center, the Bass Friday. Congratulations to the coaches, to the players, to the parents, and everybody who's been able to follow them this year. So it's always a great feat to get that far into playoff season, they did a nice job there. I'd like to thank Tim and Chris for being in the Music Academy session last week on human resources management. And the folks that attended really appreciated their expertise in those areas. And next month, I'm taking a look at finance, which is just as exciting, I believe. It will be, it will be for the group, absolutely. And so we're working with that, with that too. So the good news is, is that I've woken up at whatever, four o'clock in the morning. So we're not turning towards snow days, which is the end of casting.
Good luck to everybody who's competing here in the next couple weekends, the students that are going to Seven Springs, the wrestlers that are going to States, the girls' basketball, boys' basketball, but going to States this weekend. Go out and support them all.
We shouldn't leave out swimmers were there, did very well as a swimmer.
It's been a good season for a lot of risk.
It's not a glamorous sport.
Is there anything additional under building and grounds? With that, to the counter events, our next meeting is March sixteenth at seven o'clock here in the ballroom of the administration building. Before I ask for adjournment, we adjourned, we said last, last week, last meeting to the individuals that took time out of their day to come in and speak to us, that the silence that you see or hear from the board is not a silence that we're not listening and we do hear when people come in and we respect and appreciate the people that take time out of their day to come in and address issues with us. And we do see in follow-up as to who it gets referred to. So hopefully you, you get your questions, your answers, in a relatively appropriate time. But I just want to let you know that we do hear, we do listen to everybody that comes in. Good, thank you. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
Put forward a motion to adjourn.
Okay. We will stand adjourned except for executive session and board development after.